All right, well, good evening. Welcome you to the May 3, 2021 Special Budget Session, 5:03 PM. Steve, can you please call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Rossini?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Zimmerman?
Present.
Mayor Miles?
Here.
All present, all five.
Thank you. Vince, would you please lead us in the flags loop?
It's my honor. Please stand, place your right hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, members of the public may address the council on any off agenda items. We have no public present, so we're gonna... Steve, do we have any people that wrote in?
No.
Okay, then let's go ahead and start with new business. Item number one, 2021-22 Second Budget Workshop Presentation. Steve, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate you all being here. This is our second workshop for the 21-22 budget year that starts July 1 of this year, and will go until June 30 of 2022. I'd like to start with a couple notes. First, with a follow up to this fiscal year, I notified you all, but for the record, the city again received a distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association for our fiscal year 2020-2021 budget, the current budget, much to the credit of Jim Goreso and Alyssa Menacerro. We received it, this is the eighth or what is that, eighth, 12th year that we received that award. So this is something that the residents should know. It's a very prestigious award from the government finance officers and something that reflects a great deal of transparency. That being said, another thing I want to talk about is that, to begin, the question always comes up, how are we doing financially? We have done, and Jim and I went through and just again had a long discussion this afternoon, part of the budget presentation award requires that you do a long-term strategic plan of an estimate of five years, basically. To the extent that's accurate, you never know, after a couple of years, it loses accuracy after each year, it loses degrees of accuracy. However, structurally, we are balanced through fiscal year 2026-27. That means that we will potentially have to do some adjustments to cap projects every, you know, based on how we do it, what is available, and that's typically how we do it. But we are very, very solid financially, so for the, to start the bottom line, we're in good shape. As part of our budget in June this year, you'll actually see incorporated into the budget package a five-year projections. Again, I would use those as a little bit of, with a little bit of, view those with a little bit of hesitation because, again, you're projecting what can happen and may happen, and as we know, for instance, a year, year and a half ago, we wouldn't have projected COVID. So you just never know what can happen, so I don't want to say that nothing can change and ruin it, but for the sake of what our review is, that we're in solid financial position. So again, that would mean that our revenues exceed our maintenance operations budgets, which is a good thing. Secondly, or next, before we move in, we are ahead of last year's process. You remember last year, we were kind of moving along a little slower pace based on prior year. What we decided to do was to give staff a time, and because we're having to add a couple new elements into our budget this year, we are a month ahead, so we'll be adopting our budget on June 22, but we are a full month ahead where we would have had the second hearing last year. So that being said, our numbers are always a little bit subject to change. So what you're going to see here tonight may involve some minor tweaking between now and June, when actuals start to come in more, and we know, like, instead of eight-month data or nine-month data, you have nine and 10-month, it gets more certain as we get closer to the end of the year. And with respect to one of the things we're adding in our budget next year, we will be adding, you're going to start seeing performance measures, which Government Officer, Government Officer, Finance Officers Association requires, is a budget performance measures and an outcome, so we'll be providing that with respect to each of our departments. That'll be a new element that we're putting into our budget, and that's giving, we're trying to give ourselves a little time to get that ready and moving forward. So they're going to see a few extra things in there, like a long-term financial projections and the performance measures into our budget next year, but again, we've allotted that time and sort of programmed that into our process. So next, the budget that you'll see will be a little bit more comprehensive, and I think a little better transparency for the public to be able to see. So that being said, let's get into the details. So our agenda for this evening is relatively simple. We're going to talk a little bit about the revenue assumptions, then we'll get into the budget items that we've included, we'll have some city council discussion, and we'll get into the next steps. Jim Goreso, the Finance Director, and myself are both here, and we'll kind of wing through there. Okay, starting with revenue assumptions. Jim can answer a lot of the questions as we move in, but I'll sort of give you a brief overview. Our property taxes, we are actually projecting a 7% increase over our 2021 collections. Now, what, you say 7% is pretty hefty. What it really means is we under budgeted last year, so we significantly overachieved this year. So our growth is really 3% growth on our current year budget is what we're projecting. Now, does that seem aggressive? Actually, it's a very conservative because the county is using anywhere from a 4% to a 5% growth estimate, so we're only assuming 3%. So we're actually, again, being conservative, so actually our approach, and it's probably the best sound approach I could ever offer anybody, is you budget your revenues, you underestimate your revenues, and you overestimate your expenditures. That being said, we're going to go with that conservative approach. So we're going to have 137,000 additional property tax. Surprisingly, property tax collections countywide have been very good. They have not fallen off with COVID as people thought they might. That's partly because of AV growth and partly because people were just paying on time and paying, so I can't, I can't answer all the details, but it was not the projection that people were expecting. Sales taxes, you'll see, are 121,000 over our budget, and that's based of our consultant's estimate. Our local sales tax is 109,000 more than that than last, than our current budget, and our public safety, our 172s tax is about 12,000. Why is that? It's because we have a very strong sales tax base. Now, we don't have a lot of sales tax, like 280,000 of revenue from sales tax in our system, which is not a very big portion, but the drivers of that are like Ralphs, okay? Ralphs did not suffer during the pandemic. In fact, they probably did a very good year, a very, very good year, because people were buying foods and staying home and not eating out as much, so you have to buy more groceries and toilet paper. So anyway, that being said, we did pretty, pretty well. So we survived the COVID, actually gaining more revenue than we had prior year. So we, you know, I hate to say this, and I don't, when I talk to other city managers, we did not suffer like other cities did, because we're so property tax-based, it's like I just said, our property taxes came in higher than projected, our sales taxes came in slightly higher. So we came through the COVID fairly well, fairly well, actually, and we had budgeted pretty low. Our license and permit revenue is increased to $40,000, so we're, again, doing very well. People are doing a lot of work around the house and their permits, so we're doing a lot more of that, we're doing well. You're going to see about 256,000 in revenue that we didn't get last year because we're projecting about 181,000 of State Parks Grant and about 75,000 from the foundation relative to the project, the Villa Park Knowles, on just south of Villa Park Road and north of, and Lincoln. So there'll be 256,000. Now, what you will see, on the other hand, conversely, you'll remember that Southern California, Southern California Gas Company helped pay for our Santiago pavement, the road repave, remember, they had taken out, put a new piping in down there, well, we got them to put in some money. So there's about 400,000 plus that we'll be getting, that we'll have to take out of the budget because we received it this year, we won't receive it next year. We got the road paved, and if you drive down it, you'll really notice a big difference from a couple of years ago. So that's, that being said, there's a couple of revenue sources that are not in our budget yet that we will expect. The Federal Relief Fund Act, we are projecting a million, one, approximately allocation split over two years. We, again, do not have formal numbers. We, the Department of Finance is expecting, Federal Department of Finance is, Department Treasury is expecting guidelines to be issued about May 15. So we're expecting guidelines coming out then and a formal allocation. We have not received anything at this point regarding certifications or anything. FEMA reimbursement, you remember, we applied for about 35,000 in reimbursement from FEMA. We formally received a notice that we have been denied on that, and there are zero claims pending at this point, we're there, so there's nothing in there. Business recovery grant, we remember we had 21,000 we received of revenue that we received from Supervisor Wagner's office for our business recovery. We had spent some of that, and you might have seen that in our Sentry, in the Sentry Magazine this month, a big advertisement that was for the town center. We used some of the money for that to help advertise our businesses, but we still have a significant chunk of that, but we'll be spending that this year, so nothing will be budgeted next year. So our total net change of 20, for our current, from our current budget, will be about 26,400 down. Now, that seems like, oh, well, you got negative revenue. We actually are losing the expense related to the big project, too, for the road project. So if you take that road project, we're well ahead of last year of where our revenues would be, because we had the property tax growth and the sales tax growth, where we lost revenue is related to the capital project that we completed, so we won't have the expense there. So you can back out both the revenue and the expense. Okay, are there any questions on revenue, or we can?
Yes. On the property tax, you're projecting a 3% growth, whereas you mentioned the county is projecting a 4% or 5% growth.
Yeah.
Everything that we're seeing is that the property tax growth should be pretty substantial. Prices for real estate are going up, and properties are turning over pretty quickly. And especially given that we've got solid reserves and we're in good financial position, wouldn't it be appropriate to go ahead and use the county's assumption and boost that property tax growth estimate up to 4% or 5%?
We certainly can do that if the council would like to do that. I generally would even be hesitant to that, because one of the things that concerned me is there were some special measures taken to extend property tax provisions for people who hadn't paid it this year. We don't truly know what that may or may not happen. I know they're expecting good news, but they think that's partly optimistic, they want to expect, and you're right, the sales tax, I mean, the prices have gone up, but at the same time, there are some issues relative to property tax payments that we don't know. There were some credits received and, and things, so I'm a little bit leery, and I just assume on a level, have that revenue, be able to come mid-year and say, look, we got this revenue, do you want to do something with it, as opposed to count on it and plan on spending it and not be able to. That's, the worst thing in my mind is telling you you're going to get revenue and then not being able to realize that. So my recommendation, although it's certainly up to the council to decide what they want to do, would be to withhold that and still budget conservatively. Again, I'm very, very conservative by nature, and I underestimate revenues and overestimate expenditures, and it hasn't failed us yet, but I think the money's not going to go anywhere. We're going to have the money, we're going to get it. It just means we may get it and be able to spend it in the future as opposed to spending it, count on spending it right now. So my reaction is, let's get it in hand, and then let's spend it, as opposed to let's anticipate it and spend it.
Are you suggesting that the county is not conservative in its projections?
I think the county is basing it on estimates that they have based on trends. I don't know if it's conservative or not conservative, but it's a trend, it's a trend analysis that they do. Having experienced that for 40 some odd years, I think they can be accurate, they can be very much off, too. So I mean, I don't mean to cast any aspersions on the county. I think that I would rather be, us be a little more conservative, because we're dependent on that, and I think property tax is a very big issue for us, and I just assume not overestimate our primary revenue source.
Thank you.
Jim, did you have an answer for that, too?
I'm sorry, if you repeat that, I didn't.
Did you want to, it looked like you wanted to contribute to that.
Yeah, I actually wanted to ask Steve. I thought I actually looked at the county's projection earlier, and it was 3%. So I don't know if they've updated those numbers since, but...
They've manipulated it.
Their budget, their budget basically instructions had a 3% property tax increase, that I saw.
Thank you.
Robbie?
Mayor?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. Steve, didn't we also receive some money from the county last year for the business grant program that was over and above the 26,000?
Yes, we did, but we never included that in the budget. As you recall, we went ahead and just allocated that out directly.
Okay.
So that wouldn't reflect as part of our budget.
Okay, because I thought we were doing the same thing with what Wagner gave us.
Yeah, that will be the case. It will happen again this year, so we're not budgeting anything. If you see on that page, number three, we're not putting anything.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions?
No, I tend to agree to be more on the conservative side, but that's just my two cents. Do you have anything you want to add? Steve, go ahead.
Okay, so now we're going to move into what we've put into our budget items. So again, I want to caution that these are our numbers through, using primarily through March data, and there'll be some changes or tweaks or numbers. But anyway, this is where we are now, and we'll move forward. If there's any minor changes, they'll highlight those in June. For rebudgeted projects, what we put in there is the Villa Park Knowles, which we've talked about, which is state money, Villa Park Community Services Foundation money, and city money. We're continuing that. We have handicap accessibility ramps of 25,000, which is consistent with this year, we're putting that as well. We had, as you recall, we received a $70,000 grant toward our lean, a lean grant that will allow us to do our program for planning our housing element update, so that's in there as well. So we're incorporating that because our housing element update is due in October, and we have a lot of work to do from that respective forward. We're also continuing our council priorities. You'll see capital projects, infrastructure, sewer maintenance, pump station, you'll remember, we collect a special assessment that was approved by the council some years back, and that, we will approximately have 1.7 million available by June of next year, but we'll be spending, because we won't all be available until then, we'll be spending 950,000 doing a major maintenance and pump station project improvement. These are dedicated funds that must be spent on that, so it stays in a special account. So again, we'll be spending about, like, slightly under a million for that. The street rehabilitation projects, you recall, every, we do a two-year cycle where we do the engineering and the planning one year, and the next year we do the project. You'll recall, we just finished our project last year, or this year, so we're now moving into planning for next year, so we have $70,000 budgeted for the engineering, and we'll be coming forward to the council later this spring, probably in May, with a list of streets to move forward for next year. We are also budgeting, Councilman Colacott, several years ago had suggested that we move into slurry seal. We're budgeting 125,000 to continue a slurry seal program. If you notice on the streets today, the residents might notice that we had people out there, they were doing markings, because our slurry sealing project for this year is well underway, and they should actually, they did all the markings today, so we should start seeing some actual slurry sealing within the next week or so. So that's going to happen. And street pothole repair, again, this was an idea that Councilman Colacott had, and that was, we're budgeting $40,000, and that's where we fill up the cracks and do the potholes as, something along the way, as opposed to letting them get divisive and bigger and ruin the streets early on, so that's an early on activity. We are then, as well, doing our DG trail repair, which is an effort we do every year. We're putting 25,000. This year, we're looking at something a little different. We're looking at a different bonded DG that does not run off, because every year, it's like a rabbit hole we spend, because we chase it, it literally gets washed away with the rain every year. So the engineers have come up, and they're trying out of various pilot programs of DG that's bonded a little better and will not float away. So that's one of the things, if you see after a rainstorm, we typically have rivers down our trails, which is dangerous. So we're going to budget that and see what we can do, and try and get something that's more water resistant and will last longer on that. Couple things here, the next thing is we have council priorities, we have...
Before you go on?
Yes.
Sorry, before you go on, in regards to the street rehab versus the slurry seal and pothole repair, do we have a breakdown of the comparison of how much each one is covering in the city to give us an idea of, for whatever reason, I thought our street rehab project was more than what we were putting into the slurry and pothole stuff.
It is. It's about a 1.7 or 1.8 million dollar project that we do every other year. This year is just the engineering part of it, if you see. So we're putting in for the coming year only the engineering element for that. The slurry, the actual project itself was, Jim, do you recall how much it was?
Yeah, last year's street project was $2 million, coming in at about 1.6 actuals.
Okay, so, so it is large, the actual grinding project is much...
Yeah, it was a larger street project than we had done in the past.
Okay, I guess my question goes to, if we were to take that same $165,000 and put it into additional street rehab project stuff, would we be able to move that forward or do anything in advance of that? How much, what's the comparison of how much we're covering with one versus the other?
I don't have the cost, and I'll let, I'll let Councilman Colacott chime in a little bit if he wants to, but I think what we're thinking here is that we can accomplish covering roads. Slurry seal is about a five-year project, whereas if you slur, if you actually grind it down, you're going to have 10 years or so plus. So you get a much longer life, but it's also much more expensive to dig up and redo a whole street, so we can get much more done and protect our roads, and overall, keep our roads generally improved by doing some slurry seal along the way. This was something several years ago that the advisory, one of the advisory committees suggested, and I think that's, Councilman Colacott, if you want to...
Yes.
Go ahead, thank you, yes.
Yeah, you're right on. The idea is the pothole repair and the slurry seal is to, they're preventive measures to extend the life of the pavement, so that we can go longer between the times that we actually have to go in and do a grinding down and repaving, which is, as Steve noted, very expensive. Our current rate of repair of our streets is about once every 85 years, so, you know, it's important to do as much preventive maintenance as we can, so that we can get caught up and get all of our streets in a good shape. Anyway, that's...
I have one question, if I may. Thank you. Just as a thought, so what I'm asking for is, would it be possible to see a comparison of how much is impacted by one project versus the other, so that we could better clarify that to residents, saying, I just throw out some numbers there, but yes, we're going to be able to re-surface 10%, but if we, if we slurry and pothole, we're going to cover the other 40% of this stuff with a much smaller portion of the money, and that would just tell the story a little bit better.
Sure, happy to do that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One question, on the handicap accessibility ramps, how much money did we spend last year?
I don't know what the actual spent. We have 20,000, 25,000 budgeted. We did several corners and several things, I don't know exactly how much we spent.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're...
Right.
We're making headway on that, because I know some residents have expressed concern that, you know, why is this taking so long? Well, just because they're big projects and it's a lot of money, so...
We tried to, we tried to link those to the street projects we were doing, which makes it more sense when you're doing the curbing at the same time you're doing the street.
Absolutely.
So that's one of the things we tried to link it to, and that's one of the things we're trying to do moving forward, and we need to do a little better job moving forward, but that's what we're aiming at.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Any other questions? Robbie?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, the next is council priorities, what we call general, and these are items that, these are discretionary, but the cities, they're, the ones that are highlighted in red were items that were brought up at last council meeting, and they had some discussion on them, so I, we've highlighted them again, should the council want to talk about them again. The state of the city, $10,000. Winter Wonderland was 15,000. At this point, we have not included any transfer or anything to Community Services Foundation. And the council travel last year, I'm sorry, last meeting, Mayor Miles suggested that we lower it, so we had 18,500, but just reality is, we're not spending any money on the travel. So what we did is, I just sort of made a arbitrary number and said each council member would have $2,000 for travel, instead of whatever, to get to 18, so there's about a savings of 8,500. Obviously, we can change that at any time, but I think that was consistent with what the mayor had suggested, maybe we can downsize that a little bit based on actual, and the idea of traveling is a little bit still remote in the terms of post-COVID era, et cetera. So we still have some money budgeted, but it's reduced. So if there's any council comments, that's why they're highlighted in red, just to follow.
Anybody?
I have no objections to lowering it.
I think, as long as we can change it, or future councils can change that amount later, so let's say that life resumes back to quote-unquote "pre-COVID normalcy," and, you know, we're going to different events and whatnot, then, you know, why not be, again, more conservative now versus later? So, right? So I'm good with lowering it to 2,000 per council member. Does anybody else have any comments?
The number seems arbitrary, but effective. I think it actually sums up, it's a, yeah, good.
It's candidly very arbitrary, but it's just a reduction, but it's, you know, the thought of spending $2,000 of travel, any one of you, I, none of you have expressed an interest in travel mention.
Not right now, for sure.
Doesn't seem like where we're going.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Mayor, I just wanted to let you know, I did talk to the board, foundation board, about the Winter Wonderland. They're happy to take it on, they had a few caveats. Obviously, the liability insurance is a concern, Steve would have to address that for them. And the budget, they didn't, they didn't budget for it this year, so if there's funds available to send over to manage the process, they're happy to do that, and then, you know, timing is everything with the event, when it happens and so forth, to make sure that they can cover it with the volunteers, that type of thing, so. And obviously, they want council and yourself, you know, involved in it, so that, you know, the planning is done, and also the fun is had, too, so. But they're willing to take it on and manage it.
So, willing to take it on, you mean they're willing to pay for it other than this year because they didn't budget it?
Yeah, they didn't have, they don't have it budgeted in their budget, they don't have the funds, that's, you know, that 15,000, that's a lot of money...
It is a lot of money.
Coming out of their budget that they didn't plan for.
Well, why don't we have a discussion on this, and why not just, we'll do this this last year, and then next year going forward, they can then forecast and budget for it? Yes?
I'd like to suggest that, I'm sure they can go back and rebudget some of their funds, maybe can, if, Robbie, could you go back and ask them how much they could help us cover and do a shared cost this year, and then next year, take it on?
Bob, I can hardly hear you.
I'm sorry, the muzzle. I'm sure that the Community Services Foundation can adjust their budget to some extent, so can you ask them how, if we might be able to do a shared cost this year with them taking over fully next year?
Yeah, I can, but just be aware that, you know, they, they made a considerable contribution to the city, but Knowles Park, too, for $75,000 out of their reserve account, so I'll, I'll take it back and ask them again if they want to do a shared expense, but they just said they hadn't budgeted for it, which they hadn't, so...
Well, so last year, the first year, we budgeted 10, but came in at 98-ish or so, whatever, and then to make it bigger and better, we all agreed to increase it to 15. So far, had COVID not happened, I had the budget at 12.7, I want to say, with a little bit of wiggle room to help for some unforeseen expenses. So it's, it basically runs itself, I don't know if the foundation thinks that they need a whole committee or a whole bunch of people, I did it by myself the first year, and, you know, of course, paid Mike for his time in helping set up and do the signs and whatnot, and, you know, I think Steve intercepted a porta potty here and there, but, but...
I think it's the unknown more than anything, Mayor.
Pardon?
That's all. I think it's the unknown, that's all.
Well, so that's why I think, since we, since we had budgeted for it last year, and it didn't get to happen, and I'm happy that the foundation is willing to take it over, because for me, the main thing is making sure that this event happens. This isn't a should we have it, shouldn't we have it? The event went so well and way more than expected and anticipated for its first inaugural year, so I don't think it's an option of if we're going to have it or not, I think it needs to happen, especially considering the response that we had the first year. So I still kind of think that if the foundation's willing to take it over, and they're going to put on a spectacular, fabulous event, that's the best scenario we can have. I'd say for this year, we'll do it this last time, and that gives them the opportunity to be able to budget for it, and, and blessings, like, I know that there are several people that will make sure it's a high caliber event, and it does not take a lot of people, so that's kind of my two cents. and it does not take a lot of people. So that's kind of my two cents.
Well, my two cents is that, you know, events like this don't, who shouldn't be sponsored or run by the city. It should, that's what the foundation is for. And that's what they, they do a lot of to, to, to make sure that we have a lot of community involvement, community effort. So that's my only pushback on this is these kinds of events belong in the foundation.
Absolutely agree. But if we're still going to be paying for it, then that, that doesn't fit your narrative of it doesn't belong in the city. So that's why I'm saying, let's do this one more year and then they can completely, I will hand them the golden folder. So. Because if your goal is to make sure the city isn't, the taxpayers aren't paying for it, then we're not achieving that goal by handing it over without having them completely take it on. But I totally understand that they haven't had the opportunity to budget for it. So I'm willing to do this one more year and then, you know, blessings to them. Yes.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Pitts. You know, this, this really falls squarely within the bailiwick of, or the role and mission of the Community Services Foundation. If they can.
Councilman, can't hear you.
The muzzle again. This, I agree with, with you Robbie, that this does fall squarely within the mission of the Community Services Foundation, which was formed about 20 years ago for this very purpose. I think that this can be a transition year where we, I'd like to see the Community Services Foundation help with the funding. And it doesn't have to be a, you know, extravagant affair. We can have, we don't need to scale it up. And they can scale it up themselves in future years if they wish, but let's just keep it going. You know, share the, share the expense and the responsibility and then leave it with this Community Services Foundation for future years. We have, we have a lot of things that we need to fund here in the city that we've not been funding well enough, such as our street maintenance. As I related to the council a couple of meetings ago. So let's, let's let the Community Services Foundation take care of this as much as they can.
Yeah, the other, the other, the other comment that I'd like to make is we want to make sure that we don't dilute the, in any way, shape or form, dilute the ability for the foundation to, you know, grow their, their funding sources from, from the public. You know, public gets a tendency sometimes to look at this and say, oh, the city's paying for it out of our tax money. I'm not going to give extra money or, or, or donate to the foundation. So we've got to be really careful that we don't take away from the foundation and, and the work that it's doing and the donations and stuff that are coming in, because that's all pure donations that they're, they're operating on. So I just want to make sure that we, you know, we're not, I won't say conflict, but we're not causing people to think twice about whether they give to the foundation or they're paying for it through their tax money. That's all.
Totally agree with that. However, again, I have to stress that if we're still paying for it even this coming year, then that isn't being achieved. But I agree going forward, except that city councils aren't just about contracts and ordinances and policies. City councils are also about community events as well. And seeing that none of you ran it and I do and did, it's, you know, really not a hard event to run and the snow melts and then you, you go away. But so I totally agree going forward that with the foundation taking it over and, and then it meets all the criteria of making sure that the residents don't feel like it's taxpayer money. But that won't be achieved if we're still paying for it. So we can, when it comes time to vote, we can, we can vote. Seems like we have two separate sides here, but Chad, did you want to chime in?
So I just wanted to, I have very high praise for the Community Services Foundation and all the activities. This was not meant to be any sort of referendum on them as much as it was just a really good idea for something that we obviously saw the community got really involved in. And I would love to see perpetuated, whether it's us perpetuating it and if we provide some sort of seed money to get something like this going and then it's taken over. That seems best for the community. I think likewise with the state of the city, there are these events that we do that really bond us together in a community that link in what we're doing as city council and then also all the fun that we get to have in our town center and then around. I think the stuff like the picnic during the summer, which was a fantastic event that we always really enjoyed. We need to make sure those things happen and the Community Service Foundation does a fantastic job with that. So I, on one hand, I don't want to get in their way because they already do so great. The Santa tour, et cetera. I could just go on and on. But the, but I, I do want to encourage and see how else we can help to make sure that those things happen and they continue to get funded. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Yeah, one disadvantage we have is we're a small city and we don't have a parks and rec department. So the closest thing we have to that, which most other cities do have, is parks and rec. And they take care of a lot of these things. So I understand that the integration between the city and the foundation to a certain degree. But again, we want to make sure that we don't take away or distract from, from what the foundation is trying to do to, to raise funds to stay alive. So. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Next.
So can I get a sense of, do we, I mean, I'm kind of trying to, I don't want to decipher and come back wrong. We have 15,000 budgeted and I'll leave it there for this year. Is that what the answer is? Or what are you doing?
I'll go back and see if they're willing to fund any of it, if you'd like, Steve. If that's, if that's the council's direction, I'll go back and ask them out of the board if they want to, if they are able to fund any part of that.
I think that would, that would be good because then it'll satisfy the point that it shouldn't come from taxpayer money. Right, Bob?
Okay.
Yes.
Perfect.
I'll just add that if they're not willing to, I, I think we continue this definitely for at least another year.
Okay.
Yeah, that's maybe offer that as well, Robbie, if you can. If they can't or aren't willing to budget, then what if we gave them enough notice? And so like I had proposed, we do this one last time and then they're able to put it in for their budgets.
Well, I'm sure they'd be fine with that.
So, any comment?
Nope. You guys have exhausted my comments for me.
Come on.
None needed. I think you've got this all well cornered.
Okay, so we'll, we'll wait, Robbie, for you. Is that okay, Steve?
I think that's wise advice.
Find out if they can, if they can wait a year to budget for it or how much they're willing to rebudget, allow, allowable budget for it.
Okay.
Perfect. Great.
Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you.
Okay, so then we're moving into reserves and contingencies. The city council policy is 50% of our general fund operating budget, which would put us at 1.9, up from, slightly up from 1.9, slightly up. I mean, just thousands of dollars up, but that would be consistent with our policy and that's what we plan to put in accordingly. This, the other item is, the next item is our section 115 trust. This is our, put in toward our CalPERS unfunded actuarial liability. We put in 100,000 for the past four years. Councilman, it's in red because Councilman Pitts suggested maybe we want to put in some more. I talked to Bill Underwood, the chair of the Investment Advisory Committee, and his recommendation to me was we continue with 100,000 at this point for another year. Again, unsure about interest rates and where they're going and whatnot, even though it's a longer term thing. He intended to get something in writing to me. We just haven't received that yet at this point. But he was supportive of 100,000 continuing forward next year. Again, that's a discretionary item at the city councils, things which is in red. And it was a discussion that you had because Councilman Pitts raised it at our last budget workshop. Staff has left it at 100,000 at this point, but obviously if the council wants to change it, we can do that.
Counsel, anybody?
I share Councilmember Pitts's idea of raising it, but at the same time, I think that is something that we do perhaps next year. I will fully support Chair Underwood's recommendation on this. What he's forgotten about finance, I will never learn and I'm not in a position to second guess him on this. I think we have some very uncertain future financial aspects going on within our country. We have no idea what the stock market's going to do. We have no idea what interest rates are going to do, except for potentially go up from here. And we should hold off, let's just stay with 100,000. And then next year, I, I would give strong consideration if we get some sort of direction, which way this economy is going to go to raising it.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just add that our finance committee has wisely steered us from, from their previous decisions. And I think we'd be good to follow their recommendations now.
Robbie, comments?
Just, you know, I know, the only other thing I would say is, is if we have the opportunity to add to the fund during the year as a result of any influx of additional funds or whatever, that we consider doing that at, at that given point in time, I'm surprised. Bill and them said, don't put more money into this account because we are buying down the CalPERS. But, you know, for whatever reason, I understand that. But at the same time, if, if we're, if we're able to do so, I would say put, put the money in there to buy it down much quicker if, if we can. It only helps us in the long run.
So I kind of think we should keep it at 100,000 with Chair Underwood's recommendation and then potentially see what's going to happen next year.
I would again, reiterate that he did not, that Chair Underwood, one of the things he said, he's very happy with us programming a regular contribution. That's a big victory in our minds because originally it was a four-year project. So to continue it on in his mind is another 100,000 beyond what was originally anticipated in the first place. So he's viewing this as, once you institutionalize this into a regular contribution, it instills the discipline in the council. So he's happy with that. Obviously, I mean, he's not, I'm, I'm sure he wouldn't oppose putting more in there, but his primary goal was let's continue it as we can and he was very supportive of that. So I don't want to, I don't want to imply that in any way, Councilman Pitts, that he was saying that he didn't want to put any more money in. He, he was comfortable putting in and.
He likes the consistency.
He, he likes the keeping it going in there. So that's sort of a, shows a discipline on the part of the council, I think was one of the things he was saying.
So are we good with keeping it 100?
I say we keep it this year, but in keeping with, again, Councilman Pitts's comments, if there is some sort of windfall and Chair Underwood's recommendation changes to potentially increasing, then we again, go with his recommendation accordingly.
We all good with that?
Yeah, I, I second what Councilman Racini said. The Investment Advisory Committee is a real great group. They're very experienced and knowledgeable invest, investment guides. We can't second guess them.
No, I agree.
Good job.
Chad, you agree? Okay. All right. Moving on.
And then lastly, we put in, as you recall, about 150,000. It's a budget contingency in the budget that allows any sort of activity that comes up during the year. I have authority up to 20,000. I bring that to, I bring all expenditures typically to the council anyway. But we have spent and Jim can attest, I think we spent very little each year of that. I don't think we spent very much any given year.
Zero in the two years I've been here.
But again, it allows us the ability to, event that we have to do something, it's a very quick ability to move forward and address issues. So we've included that in there at this point with no change from prior year's budgets. Okay. Next issue we're going to talk about is some of the external cost increases that we're going to have to deal with. The first is our law enforcement increase. The sheriff has proposed $123,000 increase, about 6.5%. I would say that's again, down from our initial negotiations. Jim and I have, have sort of talked to them through it and I think they started about eight and a half to 9% range. And Jim and I sort of got them down. 6.5% is, is continuing the basic level of service we have at this point. So it's the same level of service that deals with a lot of the issue. And I, I think they'll be first to share it is the, the Board of Supervisors has negotiated pay raises, et cetera, for the deputies. And those have to be passed, they're passed along to the recipients of the services. So we end up paying for those types of expenses. And those are, we're subject to inheriting that. So that's part of the issue and any sort of CalPERS, I mean, OSERS adjustment that they have to deal for their retirement or health insurance. We, we bear the brunt. There's a direct application to the, to the services. So that's what the percentages are. So 6.5% is the number and I think that's about as low as we're going to get it and maintain our current level of service, which I think we have a very low crime rate. So I think it's been a very successful, good expenditure. I would love to have that number be much lower, but at the same time, I also recognize that there's some costs and things that we don't get to control in there. So kind of that's where it is. You'll see the next item where we are adding something new. I, I separated that out because it's a new cost and I have negotiated with the sheriff. One of the issues we've had increasingly more of the last year is, is traffic enforcement and the issue about the compliance with laws and speeding and running through stop signs. So we've already started it this year. You may see it. And I would warn residents to pay attention to the traffic laws because we have a motorcycle cop now in the streets for eight hours a month and that's spread over any given time. It's not a guarantee what time of day or night. And that is something that I was able to negotiate with Captain Newsen's help. We are sharing the cost. So typically, if we were to buy a motorcycle patrolman, we would have to pay for the motorcycle. But since we are now sharing it with another city, I'm not paying any cost of the, I'm just paying for a maintenance cost, an hourly wage of the, of the deputy. So we are not paying for the cost, the upfront cost typically I would see in a motorcycle. So at $125 an hour, that's inclusive of benefits, et cetera. We're getting eight hours a month of motorcycle law enforcement there. That's a new item here, but again, I think it's something that will be, is, is needed. The LEAC has supported this in their efforts to sort of control the, one of the rising trend they see in, in traffic speeding, stop sign, I don't even know what to call it, but basically just, just disobeying the law, traffic laws. And so the problem is, and I think LEAC, we talked about with LEAC, is if you have the deputy spending all their time enforcing it, they're not doing the patrolling you normally want them to do to watch out for criminal activity or strange things, you know, going on, responding to calls or whatever. You really want some dedicated, somebody who's going to spend some time. So you're going to see that out in the streets now. We have the ability to stop that if we want to at any given time, but I think I would recommend that we move through it. And it's not an exorbitant amount of time nor money that we're spending. $12,000 a year for traffic enforcement is probably well worth the investment that we'll receive as a result of improved compliance. So that's something that I would, there, and that will be in the contract that will be coming to the council in May.
Hey, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Question. Have we seen any, any feedback from any of the folks that were, you know, having issues with racing and things like that? It seems like, you know, the letters have calmed down a little bit now. Is this a direct result to the motorcycle patrol being in, in the community and helping slow that down a little bit?
The motorcycle officer has only been on duty for two weeks. So I'd hate to, I don't think we can give credit to one way or another at this point. And not a lot of people even know that he's out there. I think you're going to see an increased presence because he's going to light his bells and whistles going when he pulls somebody over intentionally so that people see what's going on. But I don't think at this point, we can attribute any sort of real improved compliance to the motorcycle cop yet. I think you will and I, I fully expect to see it. And, and you know as well as I do that, that Villa Park Road and Taft Avenue and Center and Valley tend to be, and Lemon tend to be racing points at some point in the day. And, and I think that you're going to find that happening. Now, the way this works is the motorcycle cop officer, I don't know how to call it. The motorcycle officer, those guys take their motorcycles home at night. And so this, this officer in particular lives in a nearby city and he's able to work odd shifts because he lives close and takes his thing home. So we've been able to get the best of both, all worlds. So he can come out at different hours and different times. So I think we're going to see an improvement. I continue to hear emails and, and get phone calls about people speeding and blowing stop signs and those kinds of things. So I continue to get that. We're trying to do some other things. We're putting out the speed trailer. We're doing some things like that. But I, I think that it's going to be a combination of effort and we're really going to start seeing more significant in the next couple of months, more significant improvement in the next couple of months.
Any other question, Robbie?
No, thank you.
I have a question. So how did we come up with the eight hours per month? Was that a LEAC decision? Was that a time available for the motorcycle officer or?
That's, it, it was based on shift differential time that we were able to negotiate. So without exorbitant, I said I didn't want this to be off the charts. So I didn't want to start with a new deputy or a new, you know. So I wanted to be able to, to assign somebody. So this is based on capacity. Two hours, eight hours per month gives us two hours per week. If you deal with that, somebody who is assigned to basically monitor traffic and cite anybody who is, or pull over anybody who's speeding, two hours per week is a lot of time. And they're going to hit a lot of activity and they're going to be very visible. And I think that's what we're trying for. We're not trying for volume. We're trying for visibility so that people know that if you drive through Villa Park and speed, if you do things, you're going to get caught two hours a week. If you think of the numbers on a day, 24 hours a day, that's not a lot of time out there, but it's a visibility issue and I think that's what we're trying to aim for. We want it to be enough that. We want it to be enough that it's visible but not cost exorbitant.
I'd like to compliment our city manager for proactively initiating this program. It sounds like a good one.
I concur with that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? No? Okay, we can move on.
Okay, you'll recall that we had a major settlement with the Mesa Henderson Storm Brain, and CJPIA basically does a calculation. CJPIA is California Joint Powers Insurance Agency that we're a part of, and they're our insurance carrier. They basically provide our insurance cover, and they negotiated and do all their settlements, et cetera. Over the last year, they had the major settlement for that one storm drain issue, and actually they had two settlements, and one was very minimal cost that was done for us. Long story short, just like if you get in a car accident, your insurance gets raided, that's what's happening here. We'll have three years of experience. This will be the biggest year, the first year is what you get hit with the most, and then if we have no problems the next years, it'll successively go down. But it's 18,000 additional expense on top of our normal, a normal insurance claim this year. It was a hefty settlement that we had to cover. Again, we need the insurance, and it's, it's well worth our time and the money. Field services cost for animal care, it's about 14,000 higher, and I've talked to you all at the last council meeting. It is because, I, I went and did some significant investigation on this. It's related to our wildlife cars, coyotes, snakes, et cetera, and has nothing to do with the residents not being responsible pet owners. In fact, it's just the opposite. We're very responsible, and we call whenever we have a problem. And every time they have somebody respond, it sort of adds up the ticker and our share goes up. So that's where we're at. It's based on actuals, so if we don't have that sort of activity in the future, our numbers will drop. The county's numbers overall did not increase. Our facility contribution for the, for the animal shelter in Tustin has not increased. Our homeless shelter contribution for the North Shelter has not increased. We have an issue that came up. Serrano predating me by, I don't know how many years, there was a consolidation of meters on the water meters, and one of the issues, because the city had requested it, some of the meters that were previously charged to the city were not consolidated in there and were not, were left in abeyance. For whatever reason, I don't know, I can't answer how or where the details, but we've gone through and validated that these are in fact city meters. So there's a three-year, or roughly a, we've agreed to a three-year to clean up and get that billings all cleared, but our share for, each year for the next three years will be $8,700. It's total of 26,000 that hasn't been billed over the years, and these are legitimately our meters, there's no question. We've, we've validated that and gone through them all, and we have verified that these have not been billed us in the past. So from that. November 2020 election cost, we won't have an election in 2021, so we're going to be able to, the 10,000 we had budgeted will be a savings there.
Hey, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Serrano. I believe there's a public hearing coming up here very shortly about rate increases on the water. Did we look at that and the potential to, you know, the increase in budget for, for that reason? Because some, it sounds significant. I don't know how impactful it will be to us.
We, we have not spent a lot of time, we just, I just got the notice on it yesterday, so it's probably in the mail to all of you today or whatever as a rate payer we just received it, so I don't know what that rate increase is. We'll have to make that address, an adjustment between now and our June. We'll see if there's any real impact or significant impact. I can't answer at this point.
Yeah, I think all of us need to pay attention to that because I think it's significant in some cases.
There is a public hearing, and I don't know the date off the top of my head, but there was a public notice that went out that we received, and I think all the residents in Serrano, the district, received it as well. We'll have to look into that.
Anything else, Robbie?
No, thank you.
Okay, so each year we budget for replacements and continuing ongoing 10,000 for our computer upgrades and replacements, and those are just, as hard drives go and change, and we continue to, you know, move on. 10,000, we don't spend it if we don't need it, but we have continually upgraded or maintained. Our same thing goes for our website. We always budget a fixed amount, no change from prior years, just to maintain that, that the website, any improvements or things we need to do along the way. One of the things we've talked about, and several years ago, we bought a financial system. That financial system is not integrated into our budget system, and it's a very difficult manual process to go back and forth. So we have an accounting system that doesn't connect to our budget system, so it's a very, a lot of spreadsheets and a lot of transitions. So one of the things that Jim and I had looked for some year, sometime there's last year or two, we've looked at a new budget or financial system, and that's about 30,000, so we've never advanced it forward. However, we believe that we'll be receiving some Federal Relief Act, a million one, and for 30,000, that allows you to improve, we believe it'll allow us to possibly fund us with respect to infrastructure improvement and transparency. And that's one of the things here, so potentially that million one could buy us a system that we otherwise couldn't afford ourselves. What does that get us? What we're looking at is a system that anybody in the public would be able to pull up our budget and actual expenditures and compare them at any given moment, at any given time, based on whatever they want to do. So it's complete transparency and it's improvement over anything we might ever have had on our own, with our own financial resources. So the extent that somebody else is paying for it, Jim and I thought, what the heck, we should bring it forward, so I'd like to put it on there and plan for it if the feds will allow for us, because it, again, is something that I think the return and the transparency improvement for the public is invaluable, that they at any time can see how much we're spending, and what we're spending it on, and how it compares to our budget. And that's, that would be a great improvement over what we have right now. So we'd like to go there. We have, as you recall, the council approved a tech fee of 4%, so we'll have about 12,000 that we'll be getting for depreciation maintenance fund. That will be for the sort of like replacements and repair of screens and things like that that we have. We'll beginning, we hope in May or maybe June, maybe June, May, depending, we'll be hoping to begin reopening this room for a public to use for spend, for public events. And as that happens, you're going to start having, you know, let's repair this, minor that, things happen, and we will be able to help upgrade those and continue to keep those in high maintenance, because it's one thing to have the equipment, it's other thing to keep them running fully and operational. So that was something that the council approved some months ago, so starting July, we'll have that funds. Okay. Next issues we wanted to talk about were the salaries and employee benefits. There is an $84,000 increase over last year, and this is, one of the things we had in there was a performance adjustment, and I'll talk about that in just a minute, but there's a 30,000 for a 5% distributed merit pool. We include, we kept, as we mentioned last time, the workload salary adjustments, another planning intern because of the number of ADUs and other items that we're getting on Plan Check, trying to maintain our 30-day turnaround. Our benefit increases about 24,000 for health insurance rate, and Calpers rate increases of 14%. One of the things that Councilman Colacott asked us for last time was a comparison of our revenue growth versus our personnel cost expenditures. So I did a trip down History Lane and went through all the manual budgets back to where we have anything that's of any value, 1980, 81. If you'll look at that, you'll see a comparison. The dark blue line reflects our personnel costs, percentage growth cumulative, versus the light blue line or gray line, whichever it looks to you. That would be our revenue growth. So since 1980, 81, our personnel costs have risen 326%, where our revenue collections have risen 356%. So our revenue increases have outpaced our revenue increase, or outpaced our personnel costs going back to some number of years. I think we had this discussion. Since 1994, 95 is the year that I think Councilman Colacott suggested what our costs have, our personnel costs from that time have gone up 100, about 117%, while our revenue has gone up over 200 and some odd percent. Over the last couple of years, because that's all I've been here, I wanted to look at that and say, where are we at? We are at 33% for personnel costs and revenue at about 20%. However, you're going to see that our actual, part of it is, we're comparing 2021, and that's why the numbers are high. If you look at our actual personnel costs, they're going to be lower. The 2021 numbers here reflect budgeted amounts because we obviously haven't hit the end of fiscal year. So we budgeted for costs of, say, for instance, one of our maintenance workers that hasn't been here for, wasn't here for nine months, so you're going to see a, a lower number there. But for, for full transparency, I wanted to provide that data, and that's in response to Councilman Colacott's inquiry, but I did do a, myself, not an intern, I went through and spent pretty close to six hours going through budget by budget, a line item by line item, with all the documents from budget back to 1980, 80. Actually, I went back further, but typically, in the early, early years of incorporation, the city had a line item that said salaries. And it didn't, some of it didn't even say that. Some of it just was, here's your budget and whatever. I mean, those are the files we have left. I don't, I can't create something that wasn't there, but where any sort of substantive documented thing that I could find was back to 1981, 82, which again, puts us pretty close to over 40 years of comparison, so I thought that was a pretty safe stopping point if I had to, and, and I felt comfortable with those numbers starting in 80, 81. So that is in response to Councilman Colacott's numbers. The costs themselves, salary costs, why have they gone up? Largely because of reporting requirements that didn't exist prior to. We have a lot of, of staffing issues that come up relative to providing data to the state, providing grant counting, et cetera, that we have to do. So there's the numbers, and I think I'm available to answer any questions on the salaries.
Thank you. Councilman Colacott?
Thank you. So what your conclusion is, is that our, our personnel costs have gone up pretty much consistently with our revenue increase, so?
It's gone up slightly under. We have not, slightly under. I mean, and if, it depends on where you stop. It depends on what year you want to stop. If you can see, there are some years there's a big jump. I, I don't know what happened in 2014, 15. I looked, all I can figure was there was a payout or something of somebody who left or something that might have happened. I have no idea why certain year jumps, but you can look year by year where you're seeing the growth, the trend line looks pretty consistent. So there's a pretty reasonable growth pattern that you're going to see there.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Is there anything else you want to ask on this? You have all your answers?
Yeah, I think so.
Anybody else? Well, I appreciate you doing this. Sure looks like a lot of work. Robbie, do you have any comments on it?
No, ma'am.
Chad?
Would it be a fair estimation to say we would try to keep personnel costs in line with revenue, or is there, I, I know you mentioned there's a lot of other factors that go along with this. I'm wondering if this comparison is a good one.
I mean, I can't answer that because it's kind of a hard one to answer. I think we responded to what the request of the council, so I, I'm giving you what the council, what Councilman Colacott specifically raised. Is there, I mean, you know, if I were to look back at certain eras of, say, federal money, sometimes there were these block grants that you had no, you know, you got, if you remember block grants, I know that Councilman Colacott probably remembers those. In my early days as a budget person, you received this federal block grant monies, and you didn't have a whole lot, you used it however you want to. It's block grants, you used it however you want to, and you just provided them data that you spent it. Now, the amount of data that we had even for the CARES Act, we have a lot of data and quarterly reporting and things that have never existed before. So, so it depends on the era in which, and the type of funding, and, you know, so it's, it's a difficult thing. So, I mean, I don't know, for instance, what the Federal Relief Act is going to require of us of funding requirements. That's a significant increase. A million dollars is a big jump for us, but if they're, you know, they may require a lot of quarterly reporting or whatever. I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping not, but unfortunately, with the data and the automated systems we have now, you know, the data requirements, they require us to do that. And so it, it's a very difficult type thing. You know, you're, the Transparency Act, it wasn't until a few years ago that we didn't have to report annual salaries and things to the state. Now we have to do that, and as you've probably seen some email traffic, we've been spending a, a lot of time, Jim has in particular, responding to one request for our salaries and information that he's been giving it to us, but they want it in a different format. So, you know, there's a lot of different kinds of, is it a good, is it a good thing? I guess it's as good a measure as any, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a starting point for a discussion. I guess that's what Councilman Colacott was looking for.
What I was thinking is that in terms of the number of activities and the number of things that we support within our city staff, that list of tasks, the list of responsibilities, and how much our staff gets accomplished compared to the salaries and how much we're spending, seems like maybe that's a better indication of how responsible we are with spending the, the city money there. And that just comparing it from one year to a different year and how we spent it previously, it abstracts it, and I, I'm not saying it's not valuable, I'm just saying it doesn't necessarily tell us maybe where we were trying to get with this question, and I, I'm not trying to use a crystal ball here and pretend I knew what the, the goal was, but I do think that keeping what we have in revenue in mind, and then keeping what we have to spend in mind, is a good starting point. And then we say, well, what are we using that money to, to, to accomplish? And are there a lot more responsibilities that we need to, you know, at what point did, when the Brown Act happened, did we need to start doing X, Y, and Z? And where did this, did that correspond with when we started another person that we hired? Or I, I guess, again, this is great. This is a really good starting point, and I'm really curious to see where else we can go from here.
Anyone else?
Nope. Thank you. Lot of effort.
Yeah. I understand Chad's point because it's, it's showing costs go up, but you don't know what they're doing during that time. So the, the demand on those staff could be, you know, 10 times more than what they were the year prior.
And then I can give you a good example. There's a piece of legislation, I think you've all heard about it, I know the mayor's heard about it, because there is something that would require translation services at every one of our council meetings, and it would require a lot of extra clerk work for us to provide documentation and minutes in multiple languages and things like that, which are going to cost us money, and that's sort of like, you know, an uncontrollable mandate. There used to be SB 90 where you get reimbursement for state mandates, but I don't think that's ever materialized, because you only get mandates if the state budgets money for it, and the state typically just didn't budget money for it, and they never had to pay the mandate. That was how they got around it. But I, I think there are things that are, continue to happen. I think it's a very good point, is what happens and what do you have to do with the money you spend? I mean, you know, that's, that's a very good point. We, we are moving in a direction where we're providing performance measures and goals and measured data in our budget, so I think that's a sort of a helpful indicator too. If we're, if we're meeting our target or unable to meet our target with the current resources, is there's a question of, one, is the performance level appropriate? You know, are staff performing? And number two, do you have, even have enough to do what, you know, to be able to do what you're supposed to do? So in other words, if, if we're trying to hit a 30-day turnaround on Plan Check, and that's fine if you only have 20 plans submitted every year, but if you have 50 plans submitted every month, how do you deal with it? You know, that's a different set of challenges. So yeah, you're right, there, we'll sort of start seeing some of that come through with our performance indicators, and I think that's what we're trying to move to. So we're, we're jumping on that, and you'll start seeing some of that in our budget moving forward, because I think that goes right to what you're saying. What are we doing and are we accomplishing what we're trying to accomplish? That's, that's the big point.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, so what you've got here is a pretty indecipherable revenue budget, because this is to show you kind of where we're at, a level of detail that will be provided. Eventually, my hope is, we get a budget system, this won't have to be PDFs, paste it onto some spreadsheet, but you're seeing it here. This is our revenue budget, for those who are interested. It is, again, a draft in progress, the two-page, three pages of the revenues, so you'll see the various diversified revenue sources we get, and then you'll see a one-page, I'm sorry, one-page item on budget, which compares actuals, current year, to, year-to-date, et cetera, and that's for our expenditures. So that is, again, is a, is a draft of where we are at this point. We believe that we'll be balanced and we'll come forward. We're very, very much expecting that we'll be able to balance with no, no problems on this year with those things in mind. So that pretty much concludes what we have, based on our prior year conversation, prior month conversation with the workshop. Our next actions would be for Jim and myself and staff to pull together the budget document and have it prepared in advance of the June 22 regular city council meeting for adoption. in advance of the June 22 regular city council meeting for adoption. That would comply with our state requirements to have a budget adopted before June 30 of each year. So, we'll make that. And I think it's our intention again to provide that material in advance so you'll be able to see it. But I think we are well on our way to achieving a balanced budget that will again provide the adequate services, appropriate services at a high level to the residents of Villa Park.
Thank you.
So, I'm available and Jim are available for any questions. That's all we have.
Thank you very much. Counsel, do we have any additional or afterthought questions, comments to either Jim or Steve? Going once, going twice. I want to think, yes?
Just want to say thank you to Jim and to Steve. Great job, guys. I mean, you make, you make this process easy for all of us. You're very thorough in, in your preparation and we really do appreciate all the hard work you put into this. And I know, I've seen Jim there long hours plugging away on his spreadsheet. So, I know that's painful process sometimes, but thank you very much.
I'd like to echo that. Thank you. Appreciate it. All your work.
Yeah, ditto. I think we all here agree and appreciate. And congratulations on the award again. This is, makes our city, you know, very proud, definitely distinguished. So, anyone else? That's it? All right, then we'll meet on Tuesday, June 22, hopefully for an adoption, correct?
Right. And just for the record, just for note, on May 11 at 5:30, we'll be having our next special meeting and that's relative to our housing element. So, just as a reminder, that's next Tuesday at 5:30 here in this room.
Okay. So, with that, again, thank you, both of you, for all your work and efforts and for keeping our city nice and solid. And I will call the meeting adjourned at 6:15. Thank you.